We are live, Mr. Mayor.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council adjourned regular meeting for Wednesday, September 6, 2023. All the meeting to order on a positive flag led by Mayor Potem Joe Franklin.
Pressure.
Can you hand over your heart and repeat what allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Thank you, Mayor Potem Franklin. And a roll call, please, Lisa.
Councilmember Holworth isn't here. Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Mayor Potem Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
I'm here as well. I'm going to read for a second the script that I have from the city attorney to make sure I follow this along perfectly. The language, so bear with me while I get this up so I can read it. Apologize if it's coming through for me on Zoom, but I want to make sure I read it correctly. So, to know we're here to consider whether the council declares the fire damage structure at 116 Ninth Street a public nuisance, that's one, and two, orders an abatement. Community Development Director McKusie has there a staff report?
Yes, there is.
Perfect. Please provide a, your presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Talin Merzakanyan. I'm the community development director here presenting on behalf of the city, both the community development department as well as the fire, fire department. The subject property, which is the subject of this nuisance hearing, is located on the southeast corner of Ninth Street and Ocean Drive. It is currently a three-unit multifamily structure. On July 29, 2022, the residential structure caught on fire, the top floor caught on fire. On August 2, 2022, the property was red-tagged by the city. On August 15 of 2022, a structural assessment was completed by a licensed engineer, and based on that structural assessment, the city did replace the red tag with a yellow tag, which allowed for individuals to go in and obtain their items and come on out. On December 30 of 2022, the property owner and the applicant did submit plans for repair of the fire damage. Within a month, on January 30, they did receive the comments from city staff after a completed review, and essentially, the city staff required resubmital because the code requirements had not been addressed based on the original submittal. To date, we have not received a resubmittal of the plans as requested with our comments. On April 26, 2023, code enforcement requested a statement of intent from the property owner. A statement of intent, what that does, it asks the property owner to go ahead and identify how they plan on addressing the situation and, and under what timeline. The statement of intent has not yet been received by the city, and in response, a notice of violation was mailed on May 16, 2023, to let the property owner know that this was required and it was not received. On May 11, 2023, the fire marshal, code enforcement supervisor, and building official re-inspected the exterior of the property. At that time, they did post and issue a red tag. On May 22, 2023, subsequent to the posting of the red tag, the building official and the fire marshal issued what we refer to as unsafe structure letters to the property owner, and essentially, what these letters stated is that the structure in, in the current situation was a cause for concern of public safety. On June 8, 2023, the city did schedule a meeting to discuss compliance. However, the property owner declined to attend. Over the course of the last several months, the city has fielded multiple complaints and concerns regarding the status of the property and structure. Trespassers have been photographed in the structure. We will show these photos in a short bit. To date, the applicant or property owner on the building permit application have taken no further action. Per the unsafe structure letters, the current condition of the structure is cause for concern over public safety, fire hazard, and danger to surrounding residents, general public, and responding emergency personnel have been identified. The structure has faced major structural damage, and no action has been taken to take down or remove or make the structure safe. The property has now been in a damaged and unsafe condition for over one year. A public nuisance declaration by the city council is required to pursue an alternative course of action at this time. The municipal code identifies 22 specific conditions that are unlawful and constitute a nuisance. Staff carefully studied these 22 conditions, and we believe that the current state of the structure and the property qualify as a nuisance based on conditions defined in provision A, C, D, E, I, U, and V, as outlined in the staff report that was provided. I'll now go ahead and share a series of photos with the council and the public. These photos are in chronological order, with an exception toward the end that I will point out. So, these are photos from August of 2022, a little bit over a year ago. This is initially when it was red-tagged. These are photos from the interior of the unit dated October of 2022. Now, we have a series of photos from May 11, 2023, a few months ago. As was identified in the staff report, the, the city did experience an extremely rainy, unusually rainy winter. We've had a lot of winds as well, and so, as you can tell from the photos and the chronology of the photos, the, the, the structure has experienced significant weathering since the original fire last year. This is the second red tag that went up back in May of 2023. These photos are not dated, as we do not know exactly when these photos were taken. Staff received these through a member of the public. We were notified that there were individuals accessed, accessing the property who were clearly not the property owner, and so, the, these two photos are photos of the unauthorized access. And now, we have a brief video taken August 29, 2023. Thank you, Martha. These photos were taken earlier today. It is my understanding that the property owner obtained authorization for a contractor to go out and board the property, and so, this is the boarded property as of just a few hours ago. Council shall determine whether the property or any part of the property constitutes a public nuisance. That's how it is written in our municipal code. And in order to do that, the council would have to adopt a resolution declaring, one, that a public nuisance exists, and then, two, that the council's requiring abatement of that nuisance. And it is recommended, in the event that the council decides to, to declare the public nuisance and order the abatement, that we, the abatement would be constituted of demolition of the private structure and fencing, subsequent fencing of the property. Per the provisions in the code, the property owner may choose to abate the nuisance prior to the expiration of any compliance dates that the council dictates today. If voluntarily abated, the city will provide a notice of compliance. If not voluntarily abated, the city can pursue abatement. And just to give the council a little bit of background on the noticing that took place for today's hearing, we did provide written notice of the hearing sent by certified mail to the owner at least 10 days prior to the city council hearing date. The city did post the notice on the property as well. We also sent a courtesy notice to all property owners and occupants of property within 100 feet of the property. This is the notice that was originally posted on the property. In terms of CEQA, Section 15301 of CEQA does exempt the demolition of a multifamily structure with no more than six dwelling units, and therefore, this project qualifies for that, and there is no further environmental review necessary. Staff's conclusion is for the, and the recommendation is for city council at this time to conduct a hearing, take public comment, and adopt a resolution declaring the fire damage structure at 116 Ninth Street a public nuisance, nuisance, and order abatement via demolition and installation of a security fence unless voluntary abatement is attained by the property owner within 30 days of the adoption of the resolution. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. We also have our building official, Ryan Heiss, and the city's fire marshal, Kevin Bass, available for any questions.
Your Honor, you're muted. You're still muted.
Eric, now, now I'm muted. Let me unmute.
There you go.
I appreciate that. President County, thank you there for it. My colleagues have any questions in staff?
Mr. Mayor, it's Councilmember Lesser. I would like for staff just to clarify these provisions that were just referenced, so we have them in the record, specifically with regard to how we might find nuisance under Section 9.68.010. It's, they're summarized on page eight of the staff report, I believe, page four, actually. Can you just go through, what are those criteria for declaring a nuisance of a property?
Absolutely. So, the first one that we pointed out is any condition constituting a public nuisance or unsafe or substandard building as defined in state codes, common law, and the city's building regulations. The second is any building or structural component thereof which is partially destroyed or otherwise structurally unsound, where a building permit has been issued for the repair, construction, or reconstruction of such building, it shall be a violation of this chapter for the building to remain in such condition at any time beyond one month. So, actually, the, the earlier part of this statement actually applies. The third is any building that has dry rot, warping, or termite or similar infestation. The fourth is any building that increases the danger of fire or calamity because of conditions, including but not limited to dilapidated condition, deterioration, or defective wiring, switches, gas lines, et cetera. The next is trees, weeds, or other vegetation which are dead, decayed, deceased, or hazardous, or which protrude over or across a street or sidewalk so as to obstruct, obstruct the clear passage of vehicles or pedestrians. Next is personal property, including but not limited to sporting equipment, toys, junk, trash, or debris installed, deposited, abandoned, dumped, ditched, or left within the public right-of-way without the express written permission of the Director of Community Development. And last, any other condition which adversely affects the public health, welfare, and safety.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
No, Your Honor.
No.
No? All right. This time, I'd like to invite the property owner to provide comments. Typically, if I'm like this, the city provide two to three minutes for each speaker. You will, however, provide 10 minutes to the property owner or representative to speak. Is the property owner in attendance or representative?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. This is Steve Goldberg. I'm going to be speaking for Mr. Victor this afternoon. He is also present, making his way down. I hope everybody can hear me. I'm yelling as loud as I can so I can reach you wherever you are, sir.
You're fine.
Thank you. So, obviously, this place is a mess, had a fire, but there's a couple of things that need to be borne in mind when you look at this structure. First of all, this is three units, three units. Of the three units, the fire occurred in one unit, and it did transfer, and the, the way the structure is, is the fire occurred on the top floor, which is called Unit B, and that did have some impact on the ceiling of Unit A below, and then, Unit C is off to the right, north, in this case, and has sustained virtually no damage, virtually no damage. I believe that the city is in possession of a report from G and G Structures, Inc., Structural Engineering, dated August 15, 2022, which lays out the damage, and I'm not going to go through it, I'm assuming this is all in the city's file, but just to summarize, Unit A and Unit C do not appear to have significant structural damage. Unit C appears to be in good structural condition, and it goes on from there. So, the problem we have here, and I will be realistic about it, the problem is that Mr. Victor has done a crummy job in reacting to this situation, and I don't seek to excuse that, it's, he has a responsibility, but I want you all to understand something and to bear something in mind. We're talking about an 83-year-old, 83-year-old man, unmarried, no kids, whose dog perished in this fire. Imagine how competent any of us would be in dealing with a tragedy of this. He has been living in a hotel for a year. He has not been good at this. By the way, on his best day, he probably wouldn't have been good at dealing with this. He submitted some plans, there were corrections, he didn't know how to deal with that. The people who were helping him didn't want to work with him anymore, for whatever reason, so he has to go back to the drawing board. It's a shame, folks. It's a sad thing. Aging is difficult, can happen to all of us. It's not easy, and I'm sorry to say that it's not funny. I understand it's hard to look at it, and I understand it's a problem in the city, and I understand somebody needs to deal with it, but we have to deal with it in a, in a logical and compassionate way. He has to do something about this. He has a contract, a bid from a contractor that he received earlier this week or end of last week. He has to act, and I'm not suggesting he doesn't, but to suggest that he can do anything in 30 days is unrealistic. He needs help with this process. He needs help getting his plan corrections done. He submitted plans, the city has done everything correctly here. The, the city staff worked with him, tried to get it, but I don't think they understood the extent to which this gentleman is not capable of helping himself. So, there are, and there, you know, he's got people in there, he has had workers in somewhat recently, drying things out, making sure there's no hazards, he has gotten the property boarded up. He is moving, not fast enough, but he is moving in a direction of trying to make it better, and what he needs, and what we all need here, is to come up with a plan that allows him to do what he needs to do and gives him time to do it with perhaps regular benchmarks. I certainly can help him a little bit, but I'm not an architect. I can't draw the plans. I don't understand the building codes that apply. He does need to get somebody. He has looked, but, and I will tell you, some of you in this room, staff, I suppose, have probably dealt with this man, and again, I don't mean to, to put him down, but it's hard. You have a conversation with him, and you ask him a question, and he tells you 15 other things. This man needs to be helped. He doesn't need to have his property, at least two-thirds of which is fine, demolished so that then he can't afford to rebuild it, and then, what we have is instead of an unsightly burned-out building with a fine building next, we're going to have an empty lot while he figures out what to do next. So, does he, does he need to do something? Yes. Is it, is it unreasonable for anybody in this room to say, "This is not okay"? No, it's not unreasonable. It's not okay. But what we have to come up with as a community is how do we help? What do we do? How do we guide him? Do we have people, either in the community or somebody, that can help him find what he needs to get his plans approved? Again, he's got a contract. The contractor can build the house, can make the repairs to the structure as, as set forth and within the budget from the insurance payout. He can do it. He's got the funds. He needs more help. I really think I've said what I want to say. I can answer any questions, and Bill is also here, if anybody has any specific questions, but nobody on our side is saying that this is okay, but he needs some help, and he needs some time, and I thank you all for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Just a question, I don't know if Mr. Richard wants to speak now?
He, he's available to answer any questions anybody may have.
Your Honor?
Anything, Bill?
Yes. Counselor, go ahead.
I had questions, but if he's going to speak.
Thank you for having a hearing, and thank you for taking your time. I really appreciate it, recognize it, and respect it. I think there are some errors in some, I had a number of addresses changed after the fire, and my, some of my mailings from the city, I've figured out, were sent to the wrong address. I also had a situation where someone was signing my receipts, because I got envelopes with receipts, you know, the green pieces left on the envelope, but now, some things, sometimes not what was said, not much in the envelope, sometimes nothing in the envelope, okay? So, that is not much of a notice, okay? And I was, I heard talk about a June 8 meeting I didn't attend. I have never not attended or given a notice to somebody I wasn't going to come. I was told about a June 8 meeting being considered, and they'd let me know. To this day, I just heard, and I also saw written information, that I didn't attend the June 8 meeting. Yeah, probably didn't attend one June 9 either, because I didn't know about it, but I think that, that's not exactly the simple way that, you know, that our city works, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm hoping that my communications become better, all right?
Okay, we're good. Thanks.
All right. And Mr. Victor?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Napolitano, did you have a question for us?
I did. You mentioned contract, then you said contractor. Now, does he have a contract with the contractor?
He does. I have it here.
And that's to do what?
To make the repairs, but as-
Repairs without drawings or permits?
Right. No, 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 no. It's subject to the plans approved and permits. He's got a contract to do the work for the total sum of $892,920.71.
Okay, okay. I don't need the numbers.
No.
So, how, how much is the insurance coverage for? Are they saying it's a total loss?
No, no, but there is, I believe he's been paid, is it 900?
I've been paid enough for that and more.
Enough and more?
To cover the, the costs that I just read out. So, he's got the money to do it. He just needs to get his plans finalized.
Let me have a question of staff then. So, I don't know if it's to fire or to community development, but, so, what is the determination of a total loss then here? Are we saying it's a total loss? Because we're hearing from Mr. Richard's attorney that it's, it's, you know, two-thirds of the building is fine.
Sure. So, so the two-thirds of the building that's fine is referenced by that engineer's report. The engineer mentioned he has to go back out and reassess after the abatement. During the abatement, much of the drywall was removed from the inside. As you can imagine, it was, you know, some was damaged, some was contaminated, so, so that does need to be reassessed, and the plans need, need to be approved, obviously, and in those plans, anything that, that needs to be repaired also needs to meet the current code requirements. So, it really is up to the consultants that prepare the plans as to the final scope, but much of the, I've spoke to many of the consultants looking into working on this project. They've talked about possibly requiring soft story retrofits, you know, lateral elements throughout from the top all the way down to the foundation need to be, be replaced and repaired, so although you may be able to save some of that structure, a lot of it will have to be upgraded to meet the current code requirements with insulation, structural improvements, and other things.
So, to meet the code requirements essentially makes it a, a lost cause for the building as it stands now?
So, that's a final determination that's made by the consultants that submit the plans, but there's a lot of improvements that need to be made.
But his consultants?
Correct.
But when would we get that from his consultants?
That, that's not for, you know, we don't have that timeframe. That's, that's the issue, we have not yet received it.
Okay, let me turn back to, I'm sorry, oh. No workers comp here, please. So, so in terms of a consultant, an engineering consultant determine reassessment of what the loss is, when is that going to take place?
Well, the engineering assessment that was done specify certain elements that need to be repaired.
The one that's still needs to be done?
The one that still needs to be done is more a question of gluing everything back together. The, there were preliminary plans, I, I assume that the staff has seen them, and, but, but the problem is, they were submitted, there were corrections, the corrections were never made, so I need to help Mr. Victor find somebody to take the project on, make the corrections, but it is my understanding, from what I've seen and what I've looked at in the contractor's bid and the plans I've seen, my understanding is that they are doing substantial repairs in the B unit, the upper unit, some very minor repairs to repair the fire damage that came down below in the A unit, and almost nothing in the C unit, other than, I think, a window was broken so the fireman could make sure there was nothing, no problems inside.
So, what's the timeline that we're talking about here? Because you're saying, "Oh, I got to find this," or that.
Probably 90 days.
Knowing that, knowing that the revisions were sent back, or the need for revisions were sent back January 30th, right of this year, and knowing that something had to happen between then and now, how much time are you asking for?
I can't find any evidence that anything's happened since then. I'm thinking 90 days.
How much time are you asking?
90 days. We have, we have some preliminary corrections, we need to bring somebody on board to address all the corrections.
So, 90 days to do what? Fix everything or just get the revisions in?
To, to get the plans approved, and again, the city has jumped to it. Let's, you guys are trying to help get it done quickly. I don't know how- I don't know how quickly the draftsman or the architect and the engineers can do it. I'm figuring 90 days to get everything approved and then the construction, I, I have to go back and look. I think the construction is, I'm guessing four months. I mean, I don't know how long it's going to take. They have to do the upper unit almost substantially, the next one a little bit, and then the very little on the C unit on the side. But again, it's a question then of scheduling and I don't have to tell anybody that contractors are busy. But I would think three months or so to get the permits finalized, maybe.
Inspections and everything else?
That's, yeah. Again, I don't, I'm not a builder, so I don't want to overstep, but I, it doesn't look to me, the units are not huge. They're essentially, it's a, it's a triplex.
So if nothing has hap, happened really essentially from January 30th until now, why should there be any confidence that anything's going to be done now going forward? If you're not a builder, you don't know this, that. I mean, who is going to be helping Mr. Victor along the way and what assurances do we have of that?
Well, Mr. Victor has obviously been in park. That's why nothing's happened since January. He needs to do it. He, he came to me. I mean, he at least got, got off his ass and called somebody he thought could help him. And I'm not here just to help him get through today. I'm here to help him get through the project.
Well, there's, there's somebody here.
He can talk in his turn. He'll, they'll let him speak.
Okay.
He can add, and he might be able to answer that question. This is one of the guys who's been helping clean the place up. So, so you have, we'll have that. Again, I, I have to take him on and help him. But I can't do the, but I can certainly help him find the professionals and get them. I can certainly, I can agree to be available to check in with city staff on a regular basis. Every couple of weeks, this is what's happened so that people can see that it's not just talk.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to invite somebody who's here who can answer some of those questions about what's been done since the fire.
I didn't ask what's been done since the fire.
Want to know?
No, Bill, please.
Because we're at a state right now, it's what's going to happen going forward. If you can answer that, then, if you can answer that, you need to come to the microphone. Come to the microphone, please. What, what's your name and your role in this?
My name's Charles Morris. I'm president of Viking Environmental Group. We did some initial work way back, the decontamination of the initial property way back in, I think of August. And I've had communication.
Back in August, that was last month.
No, well, August 20, 22.
Okay, well, I didn't say that, so.
I've had communication with Victor probably every day since August, since I started the project.
So then why, why are we here then?
Well, he asked me to be here, so I'm just, I understand that some plans were submitted and now that person doesn't want to do the corrections. I don't, this is all news to me, but I think maybe.
What are you going to do going forward? Are you helping him?
It's not my house. I'm not, I'm saying, I'm just here to help. I mean, I think the best case would be for me to reach out to the engineer that already has the corrections, make a call to him tomorrow and find out what the issue is and why he doesn't want to do corrections. If it's something as far as he didn't get paid, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Was he paid?
Bill, has the draft?
He's been paid a good part. He's also been paid the whole amount if he would finish the job. I asked, would you finish the job even though I think that?
Can you stand up at the microphone, Mr. Victor? So why, why did the engineer stop working on it?
I, what's your question?
Why did the engineer stop working?
Oh, he said that he didn't want to do the job. So I said, well, what if you, there's some amount to you.
Did he give a reason why?
No, no. In fact, he did that as soon as he got the comments on the original submission in December of 2000, whenever it was submitted in December. Okay? And we got comments. He, he didn't even send the comments to me. I got them from a third party. And he said, I do, I do owe money to him, okay? And I did pay a good part of it and more than what he's done. Okay? So I said, if you were paid everything you're asking for, will you finish the job? You have to, you have to come and respond to the comments. That's part of your contract. He says, I want, I don't want to do the job.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. I think Councilmember Lesser has questions.
I have a question for Community Development Director or City Attorney. I wanted to clarify our role as a council. Is it to find a nuisance or is it to the, assess the ability of the property owner to cure the deficiencies and how long it might take to cure those deficiencies? I'm a little confused as to what we're supposed to be doing here today.
Based on the language in the code, in a situation like this, if the council wanted to pursue an alternative course of action than what has been, what we've experienced to date, the only way to do that would be for the council to declare a nuisance. And so the council's role this evening would be to evaluate the circumstances, all of the information provided in the staff report, the images, the letters that were documented by staff, and to make a determination based on the list that we provided, does this property in the state that it's in today qualify under these provisions as a public nuisance? If so, the next step would be for the council to dictate how we would go about abating that nuisance. What is the council's desire? Is it to demolish? Is it to secure the property? Is it to demolish then secure the property? And then in, if, if the council decides to go down that path, then what the code says is you would also have to give an opportunity for the property owner to have a certain amount of time to essentially abate the nuisance themselves. After they've exhausted that amount of time and, and nothing has happened, if nothing has happened, then the city may move forward with abatement.
Okay. There may be a desire for public comment, but after that, we may want to break this down into those different steps. Thank you.
May I approach the microphone?
Yes. So, so, so just to get some timeline here, Mr. Goldberg, how long have you been retained by Mr. Victor? How long have you been involved with that?
About two and a half hours on this project. I did, I had known Mr. Victor previously. I did not understand he had been having this problem. I haven't seen him since the fire, but I have done work for him on a previous occasion. But on this matter, I know two hours worth. You've gotten what I know so far.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the June 8th meeting, staff, if, let's just get some clarity about that in terms of, Mr. Victor said that he, I can't quite remember what he said, but let's just get clarity on that.
He didn't attend.
Please, on noticing and who showed up and who didn't show up, asked for extensions.
Sure. There were hand-delivered notices to, to the residents in where, where, or the current residents where Bill Victor's staying. And there was actually communication verbally with Bill Victor and the meeting was rescheduled multiple times to accommodate the schedule. So there was definitely communication both verbal and written provided to Mr. Victor for the meeting.
And did it ever occur?
It occurred, but without Mr. Victor.
But, but with?
Without Mr. Victor. He did not show up.
I believe one of the exhibits is a letter from my office.
Correct.
And rescheduling it at the request of Mr. Victor.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmore questions?
No more questions, Your Honor.
No, sir.
None? I have one for both official ice. Hey, Ryan, I have a question for you.
Yes, Your Honor.
It says, you said you delivered, or I should say, sent registered mails to Mr. Victor's residence and as far as you know, is Mr. Victor's email still working?
So I have, I have emailed Mr. Victor and received a response from Victor on his email in the past.
Did we, the city send Mr. Victor to an email also notice the June 8th meeting or was it only by registered mail?
It was both hand-delivered and by registered mail. I, I do not recall if an email was sent.
Okay. Thank you for that. Is anyone waiting for, there were questions. We'll go to open up, make anyone else that has any comments. I can't see if anybody else is there to add more questions or to speak.
There are public, there are members of the public here to speak, Your Honor.
So let me open that up then. So the public that care to speak, please come down and speak.
Does anyone want to speak who's in the audience today? No?
Well, there's neighbors and.
Well, hold on. No, if you want to speak, you ought to come down. Okay, so you don't want to?
You don't have to speak. That's okay.
Yeah, you don't have to speak.
I want to give you an opportunity to speak if you'd like to speak.
Okay. No one here in the audience is going to speak, Your Honor.
Thank you. How about anyone on Zoom care to speak?
I am not showing any raised hands via Zoom. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. We just got one, Paul Thompson.
Okay.
I have to unmute. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. First of all, I, I want to make a comment about small town USA. Manhattan Beach is a small town. These kind of meetings to me are extraordinary. I have never attended one either in person or online, but it makes me very proud to be a citizen of Manhattan Beach. We can talk to our mayors and council members directly without having interference, which I think is a great thing. There's an ongoing situation, if I may add, with the crosswalk at Cedar and Marine going into and from the village, Manhattan Village. I've communicated with two members of your staff. Both have been very, very responsive and frankly somewhat more supportive to my point than I had expected. I'm a walker. I live on the east side of Manhattan Beach and we often go to the mall for our home. What was happening before is that it took over a year. I was dealing with Eric Zandevitt, who's a terrific guy. And it took almost two years, this was five years ago, by the way. Took almost two years to get a crosswalk and a pedestrian crossing going from the east side of, of the intersection. And that's been changed now by the powers to be for some reason. We now have to, we only had to cross then one stoplight to get into the village. Now we have to cross three stoplights to get into the village. I can see one of the council members trying to visualize this. You're smiling. So let me tell you where I'm, where I'm going from. You go, we're on the east side now, remember? And most of this, most of the people on the east side live on the east side of Cedar. So we cross from, before we went from Cedar, crossed over to Marine and into the village. Now we have to cross from the east side, west, to the west side where the, where the car wash is, wait, and then we have to cross Marine.
Thank you, Tom, for your comments. Keep talking to Eric and our staff. Appreciate that. Our next speaker on Zoom?
There's no additional raised hands via Zoom.
Is there anyone else in the council chambers that wants to speak?
There appears to be a speaker, Mr. Mayor, in the chamber.
Hi, my name is Kristy Frye and I appreciate you folks taking the time to do this. I think I just want to write, read the letter that was written just for the record, you know, to have it and in support of all the neighbors who are here today. Dear members of the council, I'm writing to bring your attention, a pressing issue that has been a source of concern for the residents. I'm going to sort of shortcut it a little because I know I only have two minutes. It's, it's really become quite a local ICER and poses significant fire hazard to our neighborhood. And as a longtime local resident and owner, property owner of Manhattan Beach, I, we are deeply troubled by this existence of the structure at the location. So I have the house right across the street from him in the alley. And it's basically, it's presented a detrimental impact on public safety, the health, property values and rental rates in our area. The fire not only caused damage to our home, but also endangered nearby structures. And by the way, we were, we, we did not approach him because we are afraid, because he's threatened to sue us before. And so we really have not even gone for reimbursement for that. So we actually picked up the cost on our own. Shockingly, we were informed by the fire department that we were only seconds away from witnessing our house engulfed in flames the night of the fire. And I think the fire department, we do have a video of it that actually shows them watering down our house because all the embers that were actually going on it, which could have led to the destruction of neighboring properties. Additionally, there's a strong likelihood that we were exposed to toxic chemicals, including lead and asbestos due to the age of the building. So one of my things was I want to see if, when they say, if they, if they actually do ultimately demolish, if the abatement's actually going to take place for hazardous abatements like we would normally do in a new construction or whatever, when you're demolishing something. The poor state of maintenance of the structure likely contributed to the fire incident. I fear that without intervention, a similar tragedy may occur again. Moreover, the building's condition has already become a blight on our block and surrounding area. Overgrown hedges, as you saw in the pictures, which are not properly maintained before the fire, have now become a haven for vermin that roam the walk, that roam the walk street and alley. There have also been reports of teenagers trespassing into the structure engaging activities of unknown nature. In addition to the above concerns, I would like to draw your attention to the ongoing hazard this property presents to our neighborhood. The deteriorated state of the property continues to pose a hazard, especially on windy days. Pieces of the burnt structure become airborne projectiles during high wind events risking injury to people and causing damage to surrounding vehicles and homes. Our property has been affected by the debris from this property. Given the likely lack of adherent to building codes, it is highly likely that this property will remind an ongoing nuisance and a threat to our local community. For the well-being of our neighbors and the broader community, we urge you to consider, consider demolishing this property before any further harm is done to people, animals and property values. In conclusion, we implore the Manhattan Beach City Council to take swift action in addressing this issue for the safety and quality of life for all residents in our beloved community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Appreciate that.
You did it.
Our next speaker? Anyone else to speak?
Mr. Victor has raised his hand, Your Honor.
I have, I have a question. Was the last speaker talking about my building?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, there, well, I couldn't hear what she was saying pretty much, but she talked about some damage to a property next to mine. We had the insurance company and I and the person, and, and, and the people who have been involved went personally to every house that had a little bit of soot and wiped, or a big amount of soot, and wiped them down. And the people thanked me. The owner, Mr. Hashamaya thanked me, who was a neighboring property. They came and they did it and they charged it to my insurance. And if there's still something that has to be done from that to this day, to the day I die, that will be done by me or the insurance company. I didn't hear about, anything about this, but I know one house south of my property, Mr., I know the owner, and he thanked me too. They went to the different units and there was some soot from my fire.
You've addressed the issue. Thank them and sit down. You've addressed the issue.
Okay, I've addressed the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just for the benefit of the public, there is that one piece of correspondence that we received from the phrase, and so that's part of the record.
Another speaker coming down, Your Honor.
All right.
Hi, my name is Diane Giaquinta. I live directly across the street from the building. The.
Which way?
The, I live west, so I'm at 806 Estrand, directly across. I've never had anything done to my building, never had it wiped down. We had some bubbling of the paint, but we, again, because of the reasons Kristi mentioned, we're not going to approach the, Mr. Victor. I did talk to him once because the, the embers and the soot and the pieces of wood fly against the house and all the wind and things we've had. It gets tracked into the house. There's, you know, there's, you know, stuff all over the driveway. I said something to him, like, when are you going to take care of this? Or at least put a tarp over it so that we aren't constantly getting all those stuff blown at us? And nothing has happened. I have not contacted City Hall or the police or building or anything else because, again, trying to maintain a pleasurable neighborhood. And I feel bad for Mr. Victor and his house burning. But the bottom line is, it's a safety issue. If you saw the wood that was put up there that supposedly boarded up the property, it was done last night, and it was leaned against the property. Yeah, it's up to here. You got one kid walking by with a skateboard. They're going to bop it right over. So while I think that, you know, if there can be something done that can, can help, that's great. But the bottom line is, it's not safe now. And there's people going into the building. We don't know what fumes or anything else have come from the fire. It's sat there for over a year. We've got the embers coming down. So I just think that at some point, we need to do something about this. I'm not talking about my property values or anything else. I'm blessed to live where I live. And I don't, you know, want to exclude anybody else from that same benefit. But it isn't safe, and it's sat there for over a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in chambers?
Not seeing anyone, Your Honor.
Is there anyone left on Zoom?
There's no raised hands via Zoom.
We'll close public comment. I know that my counsel called deliberations. Please, just tell me who you are and speak, and please start.
I think the city attorney had approached the microphone at one point.
Actually, I was going to bring up the, the fact that the letter was part of the record. I think the director wants to clarify a point.
I just want to make one clarifying point for the timeline. So the, the letter from the engineer that was referenced by Mr. Goldberg that initially commented on the status of the structure was issued August 15, 2022, just after the fire. Since then, again, there's been a lot of weathering, which we reported in our report. But also since then, there, and to address one of the questions from the public, the insurance company did perform abatement of asbestos. And upon, upon the abatement process is where other things were discovered, which is what Ryan was referencing in his discussions with contractors who have approached him about the amount of work. So I just wanted to clean up that timeline.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I have a question for the director, if I may.
Yes.
With regards to the asbestos and what you're talking about, I think it was Ms. Frye who spoke about if we, if we do declare a nuisance and embark upon an abatement program, would we, are we considering a hazardous abatement? Is that always part of what we would do to keep the rest of the neighborhood safe?
That's already been conducted. So we initially set forth to understand if that had been done or not. If it hadn't, we were going to include that in our scope. However, after speaking with the insurance company, they have confirmed, and some of the images that we shared in our presentation today from the inside of the building were from the insurance agent, and they did confirm that that has been concluded.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council, start off deliberation-wise?
Mayor, I just have a question to ask staff again, please.
Yes, no, please go ahead.
Okay, so, thank you, Community Development Director. So once again, if we adopt the resolution and declaring it a public nuisance, did I hear something that there's a 30-day period that the owner has to?
The code, the municipal code requires that we give the property owner a certain timeframe by which they would have to abate the nuisance themselves. That timeframe is up to the council. The staff's recommendation was 30 days.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
No other questions, and the council deliberate for themselves. Just tell me who's speaking and start.
Nobody's pushed their button. Councilor Lesser has indicated he's willing to speak.
Okay.
This is terribly sad. I take no joy whatsoever in participating in this proceeding, but I see a duty to proceed with what has been put before us, which is a threshold finding of whether this property in its current state constitutes a nuisance. And based on the criteria that the director went through, I see no way around that. And as a result, I would be moving to, willing to move forward with the declaration of a nuisance. And then we can talk about how we might want to best move for abatement. Let me confirm, perhaps with the city attorney, what decisions we should be making and should we, what should we combine and what should we separate?
So the draft resolution before you, Resolution 230119, is where, if the council were to adopt it, that's the declaration. If you turn to, it's probably toward the end is where you, staff's recommendation was to provide Mr. Victor 30 days to abate the nuisance. So I'd recommend you consider the resolution, but hold that number in abeyance because you may want to change that to a different period. So step one would be to adopt the resolution with the understanding that you're going to talk about how much time.
Your Honor, there's a motion by Councilor Holworth.
Yeah, and that motion is exactly what the city attorney said, which is to adopt Resolution 23-0119 with the consideration of time, which is a resolution of the Manhattan Beach City Council declaring a public nuisance at 116 Ninth Street, Manhattan Beach.
And Councilmember Franklin, Councilmember Franklin is up to speak next, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I will second it so we have something to discuss. If that would be helpful.
I was going to second it.
Thank you.
We owe an obligation to the neighbors. They've been through a lot as well. Mr. Victor has been given adequate time to respond, to get his resources together. It is, I agree with you. Councilmember Lesser, it's a very sad situation. But there are so many avenues of help that are available to people who seek it. And for a neighborhood to have gone through the trauma of the fire initially and then having to go through this area of, of questions and doubt and unknown, it's unfair to them and it's unfair to the community at large. So I'd be inclined to, you know, to vote for this motion. I asked the questions clarifying the amount of time that would give Mr. Victor to come up with a solution. It seems like every step along the way, it was, he, the seriousness had to be shown, and yet there was a step back for Mr. Victor. This, hopefully, will go ahead and give Mr. Victor the opportunity to step forward and, you know, bring this to a conclusion in some manner so that everybody can live in peace and assurance in the neighborhood there. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'm up next. My comments are to echo the ones that have already been made. It is a sad situation. I've known Mr. Victor for over 30 years, but I also know, I think, beyond any reasonable doubt that this is a nuisance. I think the question is how long for the abatement? So taking it in steps, I'm ready to move forward on declaring it a nuisance.
And I've pressed.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, just so you know that I pressed my button to speak. I mean, I, so that the, we'll talk, we can deal with this motion, then we can talk about the amount of time. And for me, it's, it really is simply, I made the motion just very, you know, matter-of-factly. And I, it really just has to do with the public nuisance app, you know, the public nuisance aspect of this building. I too have known Mr. Victor for a long time, and it's, you know, many people have difficulties, many people may struggle to do, you know, figure out how to do something, and I have a lot of empathy for that and what he's gone through, I have a lot of empathy for. But the fact remains that this is a nuisance, that, you know, somebody could get really hurt. It's, it seems like only a matter of time. So this is why I made the motion. That I didn't want to have to make.
Anyone else in council has not spoken yet?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right, I'll close with my comments. I, it is an extraordinary situation. I think all of us are empathetic to Mr. Victor's situation. But the fact that it's gone, the time could over a year, with the undue stress on the neighbors, there's no excuse for that. So I made my comments here. I gave a first by Councilor Holworth, and a second, I can't see if it'd be the second.
Councilmember Lesser, Your Honor.
I have a lesser, then the city attorney, Mary, going to read the comments from here.
At this time, we should have a roll call vote.
Okay.
All right, then, poll vote, please.
Mayor Protim Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilmember Holworth?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
So at this time, Mayor, if I can interrupt, sorry. This time, focus on Section 7. Section 7 is the one that gives him 30 days. Well, a little bit more than 30 days, gives him to October 10th to abate the nuisance. And so at this time, it's up, you know, the council can discuss if you want to give him more time or just keep it 30 days.
Mr. Mayor, it's Councilmember Lesser. I'd like to ask the Community Development Director a question, if I could.
Yes.
Can you provide us with some criteria that we should use in determining whether this date is reasonable now that this property has been declared a nuisance? What should go into our decision-making as to whether or not October 10th, 2023, is a reasonable date? Or conversely, what criteria did staff use in coming up with this date with the expectation that it would be declared a nuisance?
The criteria that we used was that the demolition permit could be issued within a day. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, because we are already teed up for that. And beyond that, it would be getting a contractor to actually complete the demo within 30 days.
What would be a reasonable time period if, as was indicated by counsel for Mr. Victor and Mr. Victor himself, that he would like an opportunity to get his personnel together, although all we've heard about was a contractor, a contract potentially with a contractor, and not perhaps further engineering drawings and other collateral that would be required if he were to undertake the demolition?
Councilwoman Lesser?
Yes.
Could I ask that in a different way?
Please.
What would be, Director?
Yes.
What would be the timeline for a project like this? What would it take in terms of getting permits, in terms of approvals, in terms of doing everything to rehabilitate the property and come up to code?
So not for the demolition, but for the actual reconstruction?
Yeah.
I'll turn it over to Ryan for that.
So on a typical fire damage repair, it would be somewhere between four to six months for the permit, for the plan check portion of the permitting process. And then once the, the permit is issued, then on something of this scale, it'd probably be a year of construction is an estimate for, for this project.
So my point, and rephrase then, and please go back to it if you want to, is just to get a sense that it would be, the building as it is now, it sounds like, will remain for at least six months through plan check. And then it would have to be, you know, a contractor would have to be there to do the rehabilitation and all that's involved in that, and however long that takes. But at least six months just to get through plan check, correct? And that's, that's even if there are no revisions, right?
That's a, that's a typical fire damage where there's professional consultants involved that have worked on fire damage repairs in the past. There's a, there's an industry that usually work on that to expedite that process.
Thank you. The only last part of my question, which I'll address to you, is to the extent that the property owners was committed to securing the premises of what has now been declared a public nuisance, what would be involved in at least securing it in a way that was appropriate up to building standards so that it does not pose the threat that it clearly is posing to neighbors?
Sure, so I can answer half of that, and Kevin Bass of Fire Marshal will answer the other half. So from a building standpoint, the top floor has lost its structural capacity. And so as the engineering report mentioned, it needed to be reevaluated. And don't forget that engineering report was done prior to the wintering weather. So there's currently unsupported condition on the top floor. So there would need to be an assessment of that, of the building, and any required shoring would need to be installed to keep it safe from a building standpoint and to ensure that there's no other structural hazards involved. As you can tell, much of the interior was removed. So some of the units that were previously undamaged have had all the interior surfaces removed, which would expose possibly more damage from dry rot, weathering, and other types of, of weathering. So, and Kevin has a follow-up from the fire code side.
Kevin Bass, Fire Department. The property, the building in its current condition is deteriorating. The embers from this fire was shown during the fire of spreading. The building is basically ready to catch fire with a mere spark. If you want to visualize, think of the Lahaina fire we just watched. Those were old wooden buildings of a similar nature. They had been around a long time. They just easily catch on fire. In addition to the, the fact that the building could easily catch on fire, you also have a lot of ignition sources in the neighborhood, mainly the overhead power lines that are right next to the building. All you need is a spark from the transformer that's just on the other side, prevailing winds blowing, which are normal from, sorry, from the ocean towards the house, and now you've got it. Or you've got the public, which walks on three sides of the building, which could accidentally start a fire. You've also got continuous construction activities in the area that can spark and start a fire. One of our worst fires came just from the hot embers of a catalytic converter, and that started a wildfire that took out 400 homes out in Anaheim Hills. It doesn't take much to start. So the dilapidated conditions of the building is just, it's just ready to go. And because of the nature of the beach community, we have very little setback between the homes. So if a fire starts, as it did back in July, the exposure is immediate. So the neighboring property was damaged, and it was just by stint of exposure control by the firefighters that kept it wet enough from the fire jumping from building to building. And the problem we're running into is that we have a dilapidated building that's also removed a lot of its protection. The drywall actually stops or holds the fire down. Right now, this building is equivalent to a dry barn, and it's ready to go. With that, plus the vegetation that's around, it's just not a safe condition in terms of fire hazards.
Thank you.
Councilor Holworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I think I understand my colleagues', you know, questions and that we're, one, you know, if, if there was a way that the owner of the property could, okay, it's serious, I got to do something now. I'm going to submit a plan, you know, tomorrow, which can't, probably won't happen, right? I'm going to make this happen. But I real, I still worry, I, I worry about giving any more time because of the nuisance that was described by our fire inspector. Not just, I mean, nuisance has now been overused in this last hour, you know, public safety hazard. hazard. So, you know, he does, the property owner would have 30 days to get something started, right? So if that got started, then the city would, and Mr. City Attorney, I should look at you and ask for your opinion. If we say we want it to be the 30 days, at which point he has to do it or we will do it, right? If he comes with a plan and it's been approved, et cetera, would that then, now he's okay? Or would it still have to be abated?
Correct. So.
Well, what?
Yes, it does have to be abated.
It would still have to be abated.
And so the, yeah, and I can understand the concern of the council because, you know, it was his home and we all have a tremendous amount of sympathy for what happened. Just when you hear the fire marshal, the concern, one thing that hasn't come out, although we've informed Bill Victor, is that he's on the hook if people get hurt.
Right.
Or houses burn, you know, so this is a way to protect him from liability as well.
And we would do, currently as it stands, if he doesn't do the abatement himself, if he doesn't pay X amount, we're going to pay to do the abatement, put a lien on the property, correct?
Yes, and he was informed that over a month ago, that what the process is, we give them the, if, whatever day amount you give them, let's say it's 30 days, and if he hasn't abated the nuisance within 30 days, we would go into court to get a warrant to enter the property and demolish. And the city's costs, including attorney's fees and all the costs associated with abating the nuisance, would be placed as a lien on his property after another hearing.
Okay. Another question and comment, I see my colleagues also spoken. So, I mean, let's say he or we decide to demolish the property, he still can submit plans to build something there. To do any work on this property that's been sort of deemed a nuisance seems, you know, incredible to me that you could think, okay, I'm just going to go in and fix it at this point. I guess I'm asking an opinion here, but like, what would it take to do that?
So part of what the council is being asked to do today is to define what abatement would mean for this particular nuisance. And then we, again, we would give Mr. Victor a certain amount of time to abate the nuisance himself, after which we would certify, staff would certify that the nuisance has been abated. Alternatively, if that doesn't happen, then we ourselves would abate the nuisance and then that nuisance would no longer be in existence.
But what staff is recommending is that abatement means demolishing the structure.
It's twofold, demolishing and then securing the property.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you. And with all that said, you know, and I do look forward to hearing the other comments, I don't know that giving more time is the right answer in this regards with, you know, since it's been, you know, especially with the comments of our fire marshal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, up again?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, Community Development Director, Merzick County. Okay, so we heard from Ryan that it would take plans to get approved for reconstruction, four to six months for plan check and permit issued, one-year construction. Is there a way or do you typically, can we develop a timeline with due dates so that those due dates can be met? And if they're not met, then take action after that? Because I'm kind of remiss to give four to six months to go ahead and have them planned when previous history has shown that nothing was drawn up, contractors were difficult to find, things like that.
To clarify, the timeline that the council would be identifying today would solely be for demolition and securing of the property.
Right, but in the case of Ryan's answer about what if, you know?
In the event that the council wanted to not require the demolition in a certain timeframe and allow for Mr. Victor to abate the nuisance via reconstruction and then provide a timeline for the reconstruction, is that what the question is?
Yes, uh-huh. And then if those milestones aren't met, then I don't know if we would have to meet again or what, but.
Then the city would go in and abate the nuisance if that's the way the resolution is prepared.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Let's see, Councilmember Bauton?
Thank you, Your Honor. The fire marshal is convincing. I don't see any reason or, actually, I see lots of reasons not to prolong this any further. It is a hazard to Mr. Victor, it's a hazard to the neighborhood, it's a hazard to the city. It needs to be abated. So 30 days to abate, whatever that means, he can take that time to abate it, whether it's tearing it down, whether it's securing it, whether it's, well, it's the elimination of anything that would cause it to be a nuisance and a hazard currently. So whatever that means, he's got 30 days to do it. But beyond that, I don't see a reason to extend that because he's hurting himself by continuing on.
And I've made a motion, Your Honor, that.
Thank you. Hold on, hold on, hold on. If anyone else in the council need to speak before a motion is made?
Oh.
Seeing none, I'll wrap up before a motion is made.
Go for it.
And I agree with our marshal's comments. The key words are dry barn. He mentioned Lahaina, mentioned the fact that neighboring properties are already impacted by the previous fire. We're not taking a chance going forward, folks. It's not a matter of if. So the comments are there. This is an immediate threat. If you get it done in 30 days or less, if it's not done by then, we'll do it ourselves and take away that threat. We can't afford to wait six months. So with that, a motion by Councilmember Holworth. Is there a second?
Yes, Your Honor, by me.
And just to proceed.
So Franklin.
Okay. No other comments? Seeing none, voice of applause.
Wait, wait, the city attorney would like to jump in.
Yeah, I just wanted to say procedurally, the resolution already says 30 days.
Right.
So if you don't want to amend the 30 days.
We don't need a motion.
You don't need a motion.
I will dismiss my motion. I'll withdraw my motion.
Motion withdrawn.
As it stands.
Next step. City Attorney Barrow, next step.
At this time, this proceeding is done and we're going to adjourn this meeting. Martha can tell you when we're adjourning to. And then we're, staff, of course, will work very diligently to assist Mr. Victor in those 30 days and do whatever is possible to assist him.
I appreciate that. Martha, we're adjourning until 5:00 PM September 19th, is that correct?
5:00 PM, not 4:00.
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM.
That's correct.
Yes, 5:00, September 19th, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Well, then we are adjourning. Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
What was that?